There was grade tampering by administration where it got kids to get their diploma that shouldn't have. I'm tired of coddling students and just having them move forward when that is setting them up for failure. They teach them how to do [BLEEP] by the curriculum that they give them. It's like you're teaching our kids to do things without consequence.
If you're curious about what is trending in Christian education, you've come to the right place. Hi, I'm Delina Wallace, homeschool mom, micro school leader, and education missionary. And this is Wise and Otherwise, where we are sharing real stories from the front lines of a growing movement in Christian education. Stories of pastors, parents, and everyday believers stepping up in new ways to shape the next generation. From micro schools to school boards, we'll explore how the church can lead in education again creatively, affordably, and in true partnership with families. If you've ever wondered what role you can play, I hope these conversations help you find your next step. It is wise for the church to get involved in leading education. Otherwise, who will? Come on, Christians, let's lead the way and redeem education for the glory of God. Hello and welcome to another show of Wise and Otherwise. Today I have with me Kathy Bond, who is a member of the school board, her local school board, and she is also in the middle of campaigning for her next term. Kathy, thank you for joining us today.
Delina, thank you so much. Such a delight and an honor to be with you. Really, it is.
Well, I'm inspired by what you do. I'm inspired by the fact that you are in leadership and you're stepping up to serve families and students in the community. You saw a need and you realized the Lord was calling you into this position. So can you tell us a little bit about yourself? Let's talk about your background and then why you decided to run for your school board.
Well, I have got quite a diverse of a background. I was a, I'm a retired ballerina, and when I was 21, I moved to New York. And then I said, I'm done with this. And I became a flight attendant. So I was in, again, the service field, you could say, because I loved serving the people on the airplane. Then I moved back to Wichita, and that's when I met Gary. And we've been married now for 33 years. We've got two wonderful sons, and we've got Alicia. She is my bonus daughter. She is an educator. Her husband is an educator, and both of our sons are Air Force. Well, I graduated college when I was 60. You're never too old, and it's never too late to learn. And that was a big deal because when my boys started to get into the high school level, I wanted to go back to school and finish what I started. I don't like to leave anything unfinished. So I went back to college, and then I said, I can substitute teach now that I have a degree. So I began substituting in 259. One of the classes that I was in, I had a fifth grader throw a wad of pencils at my face, barely missing my eye, because I would not give him his Pokemon cards. I said, you can have these at the end of the day. I promise I will give them back. Well, he took them away, and I found them. I took them back. Well, then he, he ran out of the room, and the kids were saying he eloped, and I had no idea what that meant. Elope means the kid left the room, and nobody knew where he was. I had to call the office. The office found him, and after a while brought him back to my room. And of course, it was a very scripted, I'm sorry. And then the counselor said, do you want him back in your class? And I said, you know, I'm not sure I'm comfortable listening to a boy F me out of the room after he's behaved this way. So I don't want him back in here. It disrupts the class, and the kids can't learn. Oh, my gosh. Well, that's when I decided these behaviors are out of control. Someone's got to support the teachers. Someone's got to get parents involved. Someone, so that's why I stepped up. And actually, I interviewed for this position because my predecessor stepped down midterm. I was not selected by the Board of Education at that time. And I said, well, if they're not going to select me, I'm going to let the people of the city of Wichita select me. And they did. And that was three and a half years ago. And I'll tell you what, I substitute still. I am still in the classroom. I do it at Wine Tier down in Derby. I do second, third, fourth, and fifth. And I absolutely adore being with those kids. I, I love encouraging. I love teaching. Now, I'm not, I tell them that I'm the meanest sub they'll ever have. And they're like, no, you're not, Ms. B. But you know, I have my boundaries, and those kids are not allowed to cross my boundaries. And if you set that standard first, you're going to get a whole lot more cooperation in the classroom. The reason why I am running for reelection is because, remember I said that I don't like anything unfinished? I want to finish what I've started. And our third grade proficiency reading is not where I want it. It has not increased much in the three and a half years. And if we keep doing what we're doing, we're going to keep getting what we got. So I think strategically, we need to come up with a plan. Okay, we need to do, we need to shift, we need to amend, we need to do something different. And maybe a bunch of tutors coming in would help.
Okay, so tell me about this initiative or some of the initiatives that you are like proposing. What's, what's your campaign about and what would you like to see happen in education?
The first thing my campaign is about is rebuilding trust with the community and the school district. Because before we can accomplish anything, we have got to have that trust with the community. And right now, any optics from the school district is just going to lay flat on members of our community. There was a bond issue that was voted on this year, and the board voted for it last year, but I voted no. I was the only one on the board that voted no for it because it wasn't the right time. Oh, I've been accused of, yo, she doesn't like kids. She doesn't want students to succeed because I voted no for a bond issue. Well, it still went to the ballot, so my one single vote did not hamper anything. But the city of Wichita made it very clear that they do not want a bond issue right now. They want to see that there's a faithful stewardship of our taxes, my taxes too. I mean, it's everybody's taxes, and I'm cognizant of that because we're taxed out. And at that time, we didn't know what the election was going to be like in November. We didn't know what was going to happen. And, and even now, we don't know what's going to happen. And there's an oversight committee that unanimously voted no, no bond issue for the 25, 26 school year. I was very happy to see that common sense was there. We need to find other creative ways. Second of all, we've got to get those grades up, got to get those grades up. Like I mentioned, if we keep doing what we're doing, we're not going to get what we want. And third is parental involvement. You know, how do you get parents? I hate to say this, but how do you get parents to care? There are parents that, and then there's parents that have to work a long time, and they don't, they're tired. They don't want to come home and have to leave and go to Johnny's little recital. I understand that. But there's got to be a point where a parent says, this is my priority. And I don't think people make their families quite a priority as they used to.
Okay, so what are some of the initiatives? You mentioned something about getting some tutors out there in the schools. I'd love to hear more about that.
I am excited to hear about this. The gentleman that actually founded this started in South America, Central America, and the statistics are baffling. And of course, if you say the word chaplain in a public school idea, they're going to say no, 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 no. Don't put chaplain and government in the same sentence because a school district will turn it down. So I suggested, you know, maybe call ourselves tutors instead, which I think would really greatly help our third grade readers. Because, and I said this today, if you're at the end of your third grade year and you cannot read proficiently, you need to be held back. You need to repeat the third grade over again. I'm tired of coddling students and just having them move forward when that is setting them up for failure. I want to set students up for success. I had a hard time comprehending what I was reading. I went to summer school in the fourth grade, and I'm so glad I did. Oh, I didn't like it. All my tantrums about having to go, but Delina, I'm so glad I went. My parents made me go, and I'm so glad that they did. So that, an initiative is to get more tutors into our schools, primarily our elementary. Because that's the foundation. That's where it starts, to get our reading grades up. One of the initiatives that I took in this past term was I raised $5,000 for the JROTC at Northwest High School to begin one at Wilbur, and they did. And there's 90 cadets at Wilbur Middle School, and I love that program. I do. I just, I love that program.
That's great. That's great. So we attend the same church. We're going to Reliance now. We have known each other for quite a while, and I know that you are a woman of conviction and strong faith. And I'd love to hear what part, what role did that play? Your faith and, and your Christian walk, was this an act of obedience? Did you feel called to this position? And how do you intend to use this role for the glory of God?
Well, I don't say I was called, but I feel led, and that's a difference. Because I, I didn't hear God say, I just kind of like, just, just felt led, just kept showing up and kept doing what I was supposed to do. When I first came on board, I asked the Lord, what is it that you want to get done on this board? And he goes, I want to get back in the schools. And I said, okay, how am I going to do that? Well, Donna LePold with Culture Shield has, you may have seen them, there's the big signs that say, in God we trust. And I thought, oh, man, we could get God in the schools with that sign. How am I going to do that? Well, I came at it from the back door, and I said Eisenhower, who was a Kansas president, who served our country so well, came up with this motto. And wouldn't it be great if our kids saw that in God we trust was from an American president from Kansas? Well, first I was denied. The attorney said, nope, that crosses church and state. Well, they don't know their constitution very well because that is not in the constitution at all. And, and so I went back at it again, and I, I have it right here. I said, the phrase separation of church and state does not appear in the U.S. Constitution. It originated from a letter by Thomas Jefferson intended to protect the church from government control. And so I was able to say that, and they had to go, oh. And then, and then I got board approval to have them. So, but we, but I had to compromise, and I've learned to compromise. And I said, okay, if it's not going to be right at the front door when people come in, any teacher that would like to have one in their classroom, they are willing to come, and they can willingly come and pick one up and put it in their room, and quite a few did.
Oh, that's great. Yeah.
That was one thing I did. I just feel like I'm, they call me the watchdog. Kind of like, let me just see what's going on here. And, but I really feel that God wants me there. You know, the Spirit is holding back tons of bad things. And, and once we are up with the Lord, that spirit's gone. And so I, I am there as, I'm God's warrior. I'm, I'm not there for me. I am there for God. And it's whatever He wants me to do, whatever He wants me to say, the full armor goes on me, and I ask the Spirit to speak through me and help me to ask questions. And I babble sometimes. It's not fruit salad, but I can't get from my mind to my mouth what I want to say. So sometimes I have to repeat the question in a more eloquent, understandable way.
Uh huh. Yeah. So the Lord seems to be giving you some creative ideas. And he, he spoke to you about, I want to be in the schools again. And so you're looking for opportunities, and one of those, you just have that creative idea, including, you know, this quote from Eisenhower, why, why don't we get this back in schools? Are there other ways? So when we talk to our audience of pastors and church members, parents, people, teachers, school founders, people who are interested in getting engaged in education and making an impact. You know, we view K-12 education as a mission field, and we see that the church really needs to be active in, in engaging in education. What are some ways or examples that you think that parents can do this and pastors can do this?
When Michael, my oldest son, he went to Kellogg Elementary when it was opened. And the church of the First Church Nazarene is right next door to it. And every Wednesday, it was called After School Adventures. And any student from Kellogg could go to After School Adventures. A teacher walked them over to the school and I, to the church, and I picked them up from the church. And it was all Christian academia, games, movies, Bible reading. And Michael and Christopher, well, Christopher didn't go, but Michael, that was one of his favorite days of the week. We were just discussing this this morning, how churches, and 259 does have churches that sponsor and support their schools. But I would like to see more of our local churches get involved, and they can offer these after-school adventure type of concepts and have kids come over. Plus, if you think about it, Mom and Dad, you get an extra hour and a half, two hours before you've got to pick them up once a week. That's a respite for the parents. And, and it gets the parents to pick the kids up from a church.
So, yeah, that's a great idea.
That is one way. I would love to see that. And like I said, there are churches that do support and sponsor some of our schools in 259, and the district does recognize that support. So I'm really glad about that. But that's one thing that, you know, if I reelected again, first I have to get past the primary. I've got four opponents, so I'm working. I mean, I'm out every night knocking doors and putting signs out. August the 5th is the primary. And not very many people will get out and vote for a primary, and especially for school board. I mean, it's not important to them.
Yeah. So that's another way that an everyday parent, an individual can really make a difference and an impact and to vote for their school board members and not forget to, it does matter. It does matter who's in our school board. We want the watchdogs in these positions. So that's great. So you were motivated from your experience in the classroom? And I'm assuming just as a mom, and, and are you a grandma as well?
I am. We have six grandchildren. And they, they're all over in the Andover School District. However, our daughter just got her master's in counseling, so she actually took a job in Leon at Blue Stem, their school district. But my son-in-law actually teaches at the same school that I like to substitute at, so I get to see him in Kirby. Yeah. And our oldest granddaughter goes to KU. Our youngest, well, our youngest granddaughter is going to be four in January. She starts preschool this year. So, yeah, don't blink.
Yeah. So it sounds like a lot of your family is engaged in education, teaching and counseling, and you on the school board, and you've got your grandkids in school. So obviously, I mean, you represent a lot of the audience that we have who listens. You know, these moms and grandmas and people who just feel like compelled to get involved and to keep an eye on things and to, I think it's kind of like beating back the darkness as much as we can in whatever way we can, you know? Right. So let me see, I'm going to have a couple more questions here. So first of all, let's just, let's just say, I don't know much about running for a school board. So give us some, like, you know, school board 101. What? Are there requirements for someone who wants to run for their school board? Thanks again for listening to this episode of Wise and Otherwise. We'd like to ask you to take a minute and please rate and review our podcast so that others can learn more about us and just to continue to show your support for this work that we're doing. It would mean so much. So please, if you're on Spotify or Apple or YouTube, take a minute and give us a good review.
The requirement is you have to be 18 years old. You have to be a registered voter, and you have to live within the district that you're running for unless you're an at-large position. Now, four years ago or three and a half years ago, when I ran for my first term, at that point in time, it was a citywide election, which meant that the whole city of Wichita could vote for, who do they want in District Five? Who do they want in District Three and Two and One? And it goes down the lane. But shortly after three of four conservatives were elected, the president of the board at the time put a motion in to change the way that the city votes. Well, he was up for reelection, and he knew that if the whole city voted, he probably would not have won. So it was a strategic move. So even though he and I may not agree on a lot of things, it was a smart move on his behalf. So then it got down to where it was just the districts. So last time I campaigned, it was for the whole city. This time it's just for my District Five, which is the northwest part of Wichita Northwest High School, Mayberry Middle School, Wilbur Middle School. Then you've got Dukensler and Peterson and Benton and all the others. And that's the area that I'm focusing on right now. And once you declare your intent to run, then you need to start raising money. Then you need, because you, you need money for signs, for these, for cards, and if you want to do any mailers. And fortunately, I've got a smart husband who said last four years ago, why don't you save your signs? You just never know. We saved my signs, so that saved me some money. And that, that is parallel to the fiscal conservativeness that I, I practice. Oh, yes, I do go shopping and stuff. I'm not going to say I don't do any of that. But I also know that there's boundaries that you've got to set with your expenditures. And anyway, that's, I'm, I'm a big proponent of being very responsible with the resources that are given to you. And then after that, then you just get a team together. And then after you're elected, then you've got a swear-in down at the election office. You've got a swear-in. And then you just, basically, when, when the three of us came on board, it was during COVID. And it was when the masks were mandated. The three of us refused to put the mask on at the first meeting. And before even calling the meeting to order, the president canceled the meeting. And I'm like, how can you cancel a meeting that was never come to order, whatever? And we made national news. We made it on Fox TV. So I mean, hurrah. But how could I, looking at all of my constituents out there refusing to put their mask on, if I am loyal to my constituents, how could I do that? No. My loyalty is to my constituents, but my priority is education and those little kids. And there's a difference there. When I voted no for the bond issue, it was because my constituents said, no, don't do it. And I listened to them. That's very important to me because I am their voice. They're the ones who elected me. I didn't elect me. They did. And this, this election, Delina, I am totally at peace. I've completely surrendered to the will of God, and I am at peace with whatever He deems to happen. How, how can you not be if you're walking in the will of God? How can you not be, you know, content with the will of God?
Sure. Yeah. So tell me some other, what are some other topics and issues that you would be able to vote on? And what kind of power, I guess, would you have as a school board member?
I wish I could say that I did, but I don't. I'm one of seven. So collectively, seven of us have power, but just as a single voice, I, I don't. I can, I could still vote the way that my constituents and my common sense tells me to vote. Now, some of the things, the budget is a big deal. The budget is huge. It's almost a billion-dollar budget that we have to oversee. And the trajectory says that enrollment is on the decline. And it says that it will continue to be on the decline for about the next nine years. And I don't know how much and how far down it's going to go. Closing schools is another big thing that we have to vote on. This master plan that was given to us last year, in my opinion, a very quick way, my biggest regret, my biggest regret sitting on this school board is I voted yes for the master plan. I wish in retrospect, I would have taken more time to do more research and dig deeper into this master plan so that I would have asked different questions. And sometimes you don't understand that until you look back. And so I can't walk it back. I can admit that I made a mistake and learn from it and then move forward from that point on. But there's a lot of things that we vote on. Policy, we vote on who we want to hire as a superintendent. And I love our superintendent. Kelly Beilefeld has got such creative ideas, innovation, and execution. Very good. Sometimes I feel like I got to hold them back, like, whoa. Yeah. So that's, that's a good thing. Yeah, that's a good thing.
Okay, so I've always wondered, I have conversations with parents and teachers, and they'll talk about something like an issue in the classroom or curriculum or content or what's happening. Do you, as a school board member, have any say or influence in that? Because sometimes parents feel like it's out of their hands, teachers feel like it's out of their hands. Who, who's able to determine things like what content gets in books and the library? And which, you know, curriculum, whatever, if there's some sort of, you know, oftentimes we talk about like this agenda that seems to be pretty liberal leaning. Who, who makes those decisions?
Well, there is a department of curriculum, and then of course, you've got your director, your assistant director down the line. And they pick the curriculum. If it's anything different from before, the board has to approve it. And the only curriculum that, that I have been around, there is a new math curriculum coming out. And letters, I don't know if you've heard of letters, but it's, it's the old school of phonics. It's what you and I learned with phonics. They brought that back. So some of our third grade reading scores have increased, but now they don't understand what they're reading. So now it's kind of flipped, and we now, we have to get them into reading comprehension. So I was very happy. I did sit in on the training for letters because I wanted to see what that was about before I voted it in, and I liked it. I liked it a lot. And I said, yeah, we need to do this. I really believe that it's been very effective for our children, for our students. In the math, I'm, I'm not going to, this is not in stone, but I believe we're going to start moving away from that quote common core stuff and just teach your, I'm all about basic reading, writing, and arithmetic. That, that's the basics. That's what I'm about. If we can get that. So, and, but you know, it's funny, you should mention curriculum. And, and this is something that I really want your, your listeners to know. The health and wellness subject is sex education. And I wanted to know what is taught in that. And so I got the brochure, and they do teach about abortion. And I said, well, how come you don't have the after pill in there? Like, if you're going to teach about abortion, don't you need to teach about, well, I changed my mind after that abortion. I want that baby. And there's that after, the day-after pill. I go, how come that's not in there? They never, ever did anything about it. So that is another thing that I'm going to continue to follow up on and say, if you're going to teach about abortion, you need to teach about a way out of that. And so that really, ooh, kind of like made me angry because I'm pro-life, totally pro-life. And I, first of all, I don't think that anybody in high school should be learning about abortions.
Yeah, sure.
And they should, I mean, they teach them how to do drugs by the curriculum that they give them. They're like, well, do it this way, but don't do it that. It's like, you're teaching our kids to do things without consequence.
Yeah.
And I'm like, why are you teaching them to do a period?
And so when you're referring to the day-after pill, that's not the morning after, like, I mean, you're talking about wanting to reverse an abortion. Okay, yeah.
Yes, to reverse the abortion. And so I'm going to be going back and saying, okay, school, you're starting. Now what have we done with this? I want to know. And I want to know, what do I need to do to get this to be changed?
Yeah.
It's just not right. If you're going to do this, then do this too.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think it's great. So your perspective, you kind of have a different viewpoint than a lot of us do. Are there other things, other issues that you feel like that parents should be made aware of and cautious about? And, you know, that we are on the lookout for, or anything else that you can help us understand?
Yes. Lately, people in the community may have seen that our graduation rate has increased exponentially. Wow. Man, what are they doing? Well, it's been all over the news. At Southeast High School, there was grade tampering by administration where it got kids to get their diploma that shouldn't have. And I received an email from someone at West High. It's going on there. And then when this whole thing was going down, I was getting emails and texts by, finally, someone got caught. Or this has been happening for a long time. I think our principals need to be audited. And I think the district, it would behoove them to, to get into those trenches and say, what are you all doing? You don't give a kid a 50% if they got a zero. If they get a zero, you give them a zero. And you say, what can I do to help the student get to that 50? And, ooh, ooh, see, that's, that is not honest.
Right.
That bothers me.
So, right. So I imagine you are encouraging accountability in all areas.
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Those are kids. Those are people. That's our mind. I mean, you can't play with anybody's life like that. I mean, why?
Yeah. Okay. So it's so good to know that you are in this position. You are running again. What can our, what can our listeners do to support you? Is it only those who are in 259 who are able to vote?
Well, there's plenty of ways that, that we can be supported. Number one, Um, number one is prayer, um, praying for the will of God. That is number one. Number two is, I need money. I mean, I'm not going to hold back. I mean, a ten dollars, twenty-five, five hundred, they can't give me more than five hundred. I know your listeners want to, but they can't legally, they can't. Um, another one is if they want to walk, if they just want to spread the news in District Five, please get out and vote. Just get out and vote for the primary, August the fifth. And the other board member that also has a primary is Diane Albert, who was our president of our board, phenomenal, phenomenal board member. Um, she's right to it. And she too is running for reelection. I believe she's in District One. And you know, the two school board primaries are the only things that will be on the ballot.
Oh, wow.
No, I know. So it's like, oh, people, I know, we're, we're, we're not important. We're just people like you, just common folk, but please just get out and vote for us. So um, and then the, then the general goes on. But you know, Delana, I tell you what, I am so at peace. I really am with whatever happens. I am okay. Because I substitute down in Derby and I had a talk with um, the director of substitutes. And I said, now Sharon, if I don't make it past my primary, you and I are going to have a talk because I want to become a permanent sub down at Wine Tier. And she goes, is it bad for me to say, oh, I hope she doesn't win? Oh, I hope she doesn't win. I go, no, it's not because it's God's will, not ours. So I've got, I mean, whatever happens, good will always come out of it because I'm a child of God.
Yes. And you'll follow him and you'll do what he says and go where he leads and you'll be active. I'm sure you'll always be involved in education and um, changing your community and working for the Lord. So um, Kathy, if our listeners want to reach out to you or learn more about your work, where can they find you?
Well, um, I don't know if your readers can see this. Here's a QR code. If you just kind of like snap on that, it goes to my website or you can get ahold of me at kathybond2025@gmail.com. And I would, I always answer my emails and I will always answer any questions that the community might have. If I don't have the answer, I'll go find the answer and I'll get back to you because I don't know it all yet.
That's great. So one final question. Um, our listeners and the church, the body of Christ, do you think that others should run for their school board?
I do.
And why?
Why? Because we need more conservative Christian people on board. We need people that understand that um, the road to eternity is narrow. The road to education needs to be narrow. If it's too wide, you're going to have confusion. You're going to have missteps. If you have it precise on a narrow road, our kids will learn and they will be able to be those successful, those successful citizens wherever they end up one day. Gary and I have got three very successful adult children who all went to USD two, five, nine schools. Um, I did not. I'm a transplant from St. Louis and I actually went to a Lutheran school my whole life. Uh, from kindergarten up to 12th grade. And every Friday in high school, we had to go to the gym and sing Morning Has Broken every Friday. And when then we had communion, we had communion every Friday and a sermon every Friday morning in the gym as a body of, it being students as well as a body of Christ. I liked that. Um, but public schools where my kids went, that's where I really learned about taking the nineteen sixties, God, they took out of church. I would love to see God back in our schools. I mean, um, not out of church, but putting, putting God back in our schools, I think they would, they would see a whole lot more success um, with our students. And they do allow Bible clubs and I'm glad about that.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Well, thanks for the encouragement for the church and ways that they can get involved and ways that people can support you. Thank you so much for your service and education and being that watchdog for us.
Thank you, Delana. It's been a joy to talk to you and, and your listeners. God bless everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.